Good evening, welcome to this meeting of Bletchley and Fenchford Town Council, Hall Council, which is being held here at Newton East Pavilion on the, what have I forgotten?
Twenty six.
Twenty fifth of September. I am Nathaniel Caddiwell, so I will be chairing this meeting. Before we start, there are some housekeeping points to note. Councillors, we are not expecting fire drill this evening, so if the fire alarm sounds, please leave quickly as possible. The fire exits are located at either end of our current room, and the toilets are located behind me. Please, could you turn off your mobile phones or put them to silence? We want everybody to be able to hear, so please respect who is speaking by not chatting amongst yourselves. Also, you should be aware that the meeting is being recorded, and the recording may be streamed on our social media channels. I will now ask the members of this council to introduce themselves, starting with Eamon at that end, or people who are here at home, so Eamon can introduce himself.
Eamon O'Rourke, that's you, Freddie Strachan, councillor. Tara Stephens.
Smaug Brown.
Agne.
Liz Campbell.
Richard Brown.
I'm Nathaniel Caddiwell, so turn off this meeting, and also, I'm councillor Newton East.
I'm Delia Shetland, clerk to the council, not councillor.
Councillor Anthony.
Sabina Pancholi, officer.
Vivian Long, councillor.
Andrew Palmer, even, North Bletchley and Fenchford Town Council.
The councillor Ismael Desain.
Councillor Ron Heim.
Ojo Somali.
Don Fairclough, deputy clerk.
Thank you. This meeting will be held entirely in public, so any decisions made about these items will be made in public and broadcasted on our social media channels. Okay, on to the agenda. Point one, to note any councillors' apologies for absence, please.
Yes, Jen, could I point out that councillor Segrettus sends apologies for absence, but he is attending the meeting virtually via Teams. So he is in a room and able to speak, but it obviously doesn't count as a physical attendance, so we have his apologies, and we also have apologies from councillor even.
Thank you. And thank you, Axel, for coming in virtually. Thanks very much. Any councillors having declarations of interest in matters of the agenda?
Chair, which is, I don't think I'm supposed to, okay, seven point one, so I'm around the Cheltenham site, which is obviously next Newton East, near where I live. I don't think that was a problem. I don't think it affects everybody in Newton East, and possibly everybody in Fenchford.
So I will also raise, well, not purely interest, but how an interest noted is in that item on the agenda. I'd also like to say, item ten discusses bus routes of the Lake State and Newton East. Obviously, I live in Newton East. I have not been on a bus for about 10 years, but I think, and I will be mindful of how this debate goes on and see what kind of happens there, I think.
Can you do the same as well?
Okay, no other interests. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is to agree for draft minutes of the meeting of Tuesday the 25th of July 2023. The last full council meeting, unless any members, I don't intend to go through all pages of the minutes, unless any characters have got any issues, I will accept a true and accurate record of the meeting. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay. And next item on the agenda, item four, public speaking, where we receive representations from the public. Have any members of the public registered this evening?
No, they haven't.
Thank you very much. Item five of the agenda, to note minutes of recent meetings of committees of the council, and to consider any recommendations therein.
If it's helpful, Chair, all the recommendations are on the agenda in their own right.
Okay, so we will move, so we will note all of those minutes and move on. Is everybody happy with that? Thank you. And next item on the agenda is to note current casual vacancies and to note current councillor attendance records. Chair, sorry, Clark, I know that you've given us all sheets with the current attendance rates from all of the councillors. I think it's obviously really important, we've now got back into September, I know that over the summer there's been some difficulty with attending meetings, but I just feel that I need to remind everybody that as a councillor, you hold public office, and it is a demand that you attend the council meetings, and really, it should be the norm that all the council meetings are attended. Delia, was there anything that you wanted to add in addition to this?
Nothing about counselling, but just to mention the casual vacancies. The position with casual vacancies is that we've now got vacancies in Newton South, Fenchford, Queensway and Demby North, and we've now got a new vacancy in Malinor for Newton East, which I have to notify Milton Keynes City Council about, and then there'll be the opportunity for residents to demand a poll, or if they don't do that, that'll be a fourth seat that the council is free to co-opt to. We've had one expression of interest in standing as a councillor and being considered a co-option, which unfortunately came too late to be considered on tonight's agenda, because the agenda already includes the name. We are, as an officer team, doing some work to try and promote the opportunity to be a councillor via various social media and publications. I'm also available to go and talk to residents associations or any community groups who might be interested in learning a bit more about town council and what's involved in being a councillor. And I'm available to do that at any time during the year anyway. Equally happy to talk to members of the community who are interested in just learning more about what's involved with no commitment. But we particularly encourage councillors to think about people they know in the community who might be interested in promoting the opportunity. And you'll have noticed from council meetings that we only have a minority of women on the council, and it would be fantastic if there were some women, some more women, who are interested in standing to create a balance. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you very much. Noted. So everyone happy to know that. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, to review and comment on planning implications due to be considered by local planning authorities. The first item, seven point one, Bletchley landfill, development of renewable energy generating station comprising ground-mounted photovoltaic solar arrays, battery energy storage system, together with accelerating infrastructure, internal access traps, security measures and landscaping enhancement. This is page nineteen thirty-two.
Please go to speak to this item. This is not the full application, it's screening opinion, and it's on the agenda because it's a significant development which would fall within the remit of town council rather than within the remit of committees. However, I think it would be premature to comment on this at this stage, because we know that there's more information coming forward, and a consultation has been arranged on the 19th of October here at Newton East Pavilion. And we will be publishing the details of that, and there's a letter going out from A and S from the developer to all houses in Newton East, and I understand there's also going to be an advertisement in the local press. Some time has been set aside between 1pm and 2pm specifically for councillors to attend on that day, if anyone's available and has issues they'd like to raise with the developer, and then I think it's open to the general public for two till six. So, but I don't know whether you want to have any discussion about it or talk to my, or you just want to note it.
Any questions or any comments from councillors?
I did. I mean, again, I appreciate that it might be a bit premature to sort of fully comment on that, but I mean, in terms of the available information, yeah, I think it's a really good idea in terms of utilising a space which can't really be utilised in many ways in that sense. Obviously, it's good for the environment, you know, in terms of the renewable energy side of things. I think the only thing really was the, they did identify a risk in terms of the landfill cap, which obviously they'll have to consider, which I'm sure they will consider in that sense. Obviously, the design life, that's something I'd like to know in terms of what the expectancy is in that sense. Forty years. It's not too bad. Is that for the site, or is that for the units?
That's for what they, the array that they've had to cut down.
That's pretty good. That's pretty good. And again, just be good to see some demonstrations of how they plan to future-proof the site as well in that sense, which I'm sure they have done.
Yeah, I'm not against, and of course, there's consultation, it's just the size of it. I thought a lot of this would be returned back to the country park, to the community, as opposed to, you know, renewable energy, absolutely get it, the scale of it, it's enormous. Needs to be some sort of compromise.
Yeah, I think that's a really fair comment. I think we have to look at the site in its longer-term future now, so this may be appropriate for the years the landfills are operating, and maybe a bit longer as the land recovers, but what's the long-term aspiration for the site? And that's, as I say, aspiration, I think, is for country parks that are connected to the Blue Lagoon, and what I don't want to see is that I want to see this being someone that gets in the way of that and delays that by enough forty years. That would be really disappointing. So I think there's some things that we need to probably find out in consultation, but we'll also work with other partner organisations at the particular city council around the Blue Lagoon and the site.
Thank you. Any other comments? No, thank you. And so we will move on to seven point two, and this is twenty-two slash zero zero five two four slash out EIS. This is relating to landfall paths of southeast Milton Keynes strategic urban extension, south of Milton Keynes, north of Beaufort Hill. This is the land between Caldicarp and Beaufort Hill and Woburn Sands, where they are having an extension. I think that this is a mixed-use extension, so lots of different items on the side, up to 1,920 units of residential development, with a secondary and primary schools and a local centre. Do any councillors have any questions, or any comments they would like to make?
I think the main thing for me was, there's no provision for affordable housing in the information that was provided in that sense. I mean, there was for intermediate rent, affordable round, there's 596 units. I mean, 1,324 was for the market at full price, I'd assume in that sense, but there was no provision for affordable housing.
Shall I, can you just speak with these numbers for me?
Yes, I think.
I'm not looking to this detail part. I'm not looking to this detail part. I can probably answer a question about affordable housing.
Sure, I think it was at 1,920, 1,324 was for the market, and 596 was intermediate rent, which I think is affordable renting.
So the council, the Milton Keynes City Council's policy is that 33% should be affordable, but affordable is the definition of what the government says is affordable, so it could be a mixture typically of social housing, shared ownership, market, eighty percent of market value. So, and so eighty percent of market value is eighty percent, eighty percent of a lot is still a lot. So that's what will be, and there'll be probably a lot more discussions around affordable housing, but it does sound like if there's 1,300 that is for market rate, it does sound like the five, six hundred or so is probably the right, around 33%. So.
But then there was zero for affordable housing, which I'd assume is directly to buy the houses. I mean, 596, 600 for intermediate rent, that's just for renting.
So affordable housing would be social rented, is that how you say?
Not necessarily.
It's a different section.
I think there's probably a comment here, then, we could make, which is regarding affordable housing. Next, we would like to see more social, it's always saying social rent, and from, rather than just intermediate rent.
So it was affordable home ownership is zero.
Okay. I mean, shared ownership.
Yeah.
But they've got intermediate rent, haven't they?
They have got, that's the 596, which I think is affordable rent, so to say. I mean, in terms of affordable housing ownership, that's zero, which for me was a concern.
Yeah.
Yeah, so intermediate rent, so it's eighty percent or less of market rent. Can I make a proposal on that?
Yeah, so there's something else that I wanted to start. You might want to. I think that also, you know, so directly, this is something that's not in our patch, but one of the things that I think that a lot of residents will be very concerned about is the cumulative impact of the development that's already taken place with the warehouses at Kelly's Kitchen, and also the likely cumulative impact with traffic on top. And obviously, as we know, the A5 Kelly's Kitchen ramp, that's not Milton Keynes City Council, it's National Park. And I think that we'd also like to see some engagement with the highways agency, what they plan to do with that junction, because I think if you are travelling in rush hour, the traffic comes back as far as Newton East on the bypass, so I don't know if you would be happy to include some of that in your proposal.
I would be. I think one of the things that we have to bear in mind, and just so everyone's aware, there was an SPD on this development a while back, and that would have considered some of that highways impact, so there's necessarily SPD to essentially put some framework around the design, but it's not necessarily looked at the detailed highway stuff, so I wouldn't want to comment, but I would support. Nice comments.
Chair, Axel's got his hand up.
Sorry, Axel.
Let me find the button. Thank you very much, Chair. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
Obligatory question for anybody who's dialing in remotely, I guess. This might not be for us as councillors on this particular council, but since they are representatives of the city council here, I'd just like to call out something that I've noticed, especially with a new development on another greenfield site called Glebe Farm or Glebe Meadows. The developers had to, you know, connect up redways, provide services. It's a terrible situation where despite the council, the city council making provisions and saying, as part of the planning, you know, developers have to do X, Y and Z, the redway can't be connected up, a major road is still blocked, there's absolutely zero bus services, which means even though the school is not even halfway to capacity that's serving this area and wider areas in Milton Keynes, there are traffic jams now because there's no public transport. You know, it is all great to have these debates and these comments, but I just want to call out that unless we actually hold these developers to account and put public needs and public services first, no matter the percentage of social housing, just want to leave you with this, there are pregnant people or disabled people on that estate that can't leave, they're completely dependent on taxis, which they can't afford, and the dialer bus service that the council has introduced is absolutely not working. So let's bear that in mind when we look at any of these development proposals, and please put the needs of our public first, rather than the developers. Thank you.
Thank you, Axel. And I think I remember campaigning before I became councillor for the local centre in Newton East to be brought forward for that very reason, because actually it was not scheduled to be open until 2019, 2020. It was different part of Newton East, and we campaigned to have it brought forward, and it was for that very reason, I had people talking to me at the residents association who said, I love Newton East, but I can't live here because I can't get things for my child. I think that we know that this has been repeated at Newton East, there is difficulty with people leaving that state. I think that it would be good to put a general comment in as regards to that, so we can hopefully learn from that. Are you happy with that as well, Ed? Is it your proposal?
I think so, to some degree. Would be good if the clerk can share the wording, maybe.
I haven't got any wording.
Okay. Or maybe to agree the wording post-meeting, if appropriate.
We can amplify any wording that's agreed at the meeting, but I think we need to clarify that. The key points are.
So I think just coming off that point, I think Newton East is a very different type of development in terms of where it is, in terms of how it came to be. It was done in a particular, it was, planning was approved for various reasons, when the council didn't have enough house and supply, and therefore it was very much completely in the hands of developers, and there were, and there were some failings there in terms of some of the designs, particularly around footpaths, et cetera, and I'm living with trying to push and push for stuff there. I think this one, because of the SPD, there's been more for in terms of how that links in with the wider community, but I do think there is something definitely around comments around the phasing and making sure that community infrastructure is there first and accessible.
So the first point that I wanted to make was a comment on the lack of affordable housing for purchase.
And social rent.
And social rent. And then the second one, about the highways.
Just on the interaction with the A5.
Kelly's kitchen roundabout.
Yeah, Kelly's kitchen roundabout.
And then thirdly, phasing.
Phasing and making sure that community infrastructure, such as redways and community facilities are developed first.
Okay, so do I have a second proposal? Thank you, which is always in favour. I believe that is unanimous. Did you vote?
Yeah.
Yeah, always in favour. Unanimous. Thank you very much. So we move on to the next item on the agenda, seven point three, twenty-three, oh two oh, oh four, a non-material amendment for the Lake State, Stoke Road, Bletchley, to amend the community hub floor space and the materiality, appearance, massing, balconies, focal storage and internal building layout of the proposed buildings, as well as the landscape boundary. And this, yes, any comments on this?
At the first, I do wish to speak to that thing.
So I probably should declare that I am a member of Milton Keynes City Council, who was the applicant in this particular situation. I'm looking at the clerk, that's purely interest, and, but it does affect every single person in my ward on this, on the town council, so please, that be second.
The point I want to make, this is actually just, it's a non-material amendment. It seemed to me important to put it on the agenda, but not because of this meeting, just because it gives the opportunity to recognise the progress that's being made with the development, and also to observe that it seeks to amend the community hub rule space, and I therefore contacted Milton Keynes City Council to see if there was any further information about the planned use of the community hub, and I wasn't able to obtain any information that that the new facility at this stage is just going to be brought forward to a shell and core finish. So I would like members to note that.
And any further questions, any feedback?
It will take the running of it when it's up and running.
There's no information.
It's all a big secret.
So I think what the clerk has just said is it's not going to be fitted out.
No, it's not going to be fitted out.
Any other comments?
It's going to be prepared at this stage to a shell and core finish, so it won't be fitted out.
Okay, so we will note that, as there are no further comments on that item. Next item is item eight, stopping up orders on the Lake State, which necessarily should have proposed regeneration works. Stopping up order eight point one, burn more close, eight point two, stopping up order for Warwick Park, and eight point three, stopping order for Tomaway, and eight point four, stopping up order for Southern Time Court, and that's pages sixty-five to ninety in your pack. Any comments or questions, Marie?
Can you just explain stopping up to people?
So my understanding of stopping up is they will, they basically are stopping the public highway from being a public highway, and nobody will be able to, or it could be fenced off, and any rights of way which people have over those places of, whether they're paths or roads, the rights will be suspended or will no longer exist. Ed, I'm going to turn to you.
Yeah, just to say, I mean, for me, this is something that's a formality for town council, in the sense that you have supported the planning applications, and these stopping up orders are absolutely necessary for this work to be done. So I would say it's a formality, but because we are consulted by the national agency that deals with stopping up orders, it's important for it to be on the agenda. And of course, you may have an observation to make about individual ones, but I would suggest, Chair, that you might want to take these on.
So any questions or comments from anybody?
No, I just wanted residents to understand what stopping up was, because if I was on the upper end, I wouldn't know what that is.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, so I will propose that we accept all of these on block. Accepted, always in favour. Okay, I think that is unanimous. Thank you. Okay, item nine, to note Milton Keynes City Council's consultation on an amended local enforcement plan and to consider making a response. And Clark, is there anything you wish to say about this?
No, I have read the local enforcement, but not in great detail, I have to confess, and it came to my mind, but of course, it may be different for members.
And so for members, I'm sure you've all read it, but it deals with local enforcement of planning. That's correct, I'm concerned.
It is, yeah.
Any comments, does anyone want to make a response? Notes, are happy to note that.
I do have a comment.
Okay, thank you.
Three point three, report an alleged breach of town control, the online reporting form must be used. We will not accept town enforcement inquiries by email, telephone or other methods. To me, I mean, I can understand the logistical reasons for requesting the form, it is probably the best way, but that is not necessarily the sole way that all residents will be able to do that. So I do think that point is to be challenged.
I would also like to add, Susan, that having reported a town enforcement issue in the past, the Bletchley and Fenchford town council's email address is too long for the actual box, and they won't accept, our email address is too long and they won't accept it. So they probably need to look at the validation of their form to allow us to conclude our really long cancelled email addresses. Okay, everybody happy to note that and move on?
Yep.
Thank you very much. Item ten, to note changes regarding to bus routes affecting the the latest state and Newton Lees, and to consider any further actions. And for those members who don't know what this is about, there has been a recent change to, which has resulted in, I think on one of the buses and planned for another, do correct me if I'm wrong, that one of the services has been diverted away from the latest state, and it has planned that another one is also moved away from the latest state. And they will, and they will go into Newton Lees, where they will do a loop of the estate. Am I not ever wrong?
I think you're a bit wrong. I'm hoping you're a bit wrong.
Yeah.
Because otherwise that might be a bit like that.
Okay, so I'll read out what it says here. Both services will now operate via Newton Lees. Service five will go as present to Astor and then continue in an anti-clockwise loop along Galapagos Grove, Santa Cruz Avenue, and St Helena Avenue. Service six in a clockwise loop of St Helena Avenue, Santa Cruz Avenue and Galapagos Grove. And service six will move on this line within a year, along Stoke Road, Astor Service five. So, actually, it's just the bit that's coming off of Wintermere. For some reason, I thought five went around Fergie.
It does.
It does, and it still did, it still wasn't.
It still does.
Sorry. Do we have any questions or comments in relation to this intervention?
No, you have to do.
No, no.
At council, why I'm asking this item to be on the agenda, because I think there's been lots of comments on social media.
Yeah, so I thought, coming on the latest state, we've got a petition going on, not anything to do with me personally, but that's how upset certain residents are on the estate, because the bit they've cut out is where all the elderly live. There's been no consultation. They've not really looked into where they're going to take out the loop. If they were going to take out a loop, they should have took it out of Fergie, because there's already a bus that goes around Fergie and has kept it going around Wintermere. So, there was still a complete surface of the latest state. But for some reason, they haven't done that. And that's causing chaos on the estate. It's stopping elderly from, some won't go out now because they can't get a bus. There's no shelter at the buses that stops that they want you to go and use. And some of it's too far for the elders as well. They're saying it's 400 metres. I beg to differ, but for an elderly person, it's, it might be okay going down to the bus stop. It certainly isn't coming back up because it's all on a steep hill. So, yes, I've asked, because I did send an email to the bus company and I didn't really think that my reply was answered properly. That's my main.
So. Any other comments?
I have lots of comments.
As well, that's lovely.
I think there's a number of bits of misinformation around this. Nothing has necessarily been said here, but has been said elsewhere. It's a commercial bus route and the decision has been taken by a reaver. The local authority gets notification that they're going to change the route, but they don't get consulted, or they don't have any influence over what that route should be. It's a completely commercial, thanks to 1986 deregulation of Bus Services Act. So, there's some comments to say that the council has done this. It's not. I think that's just, something to just be clear about. I think that's, Mary, in terms of some of what Marie has said in terms of the routing, why have they done that? I suspect they picked up more passengers in Fergie in terms of revenue, so that's probably why they want to do that. I think we need to strongly express to a reaver the issues that this is presented for residents and to ask them to consider what amendments to potentially, like as Marie has just said. I think there's all sorts of challenges around this one. But I don't think that change should happen. It would take a few months because that would put an order to the traffic commissioner, all of this sort of stuff. So, it will take time if they were to be willing to do that. So, that's the first thing I think we should do is send a nice letter to a reaver saying, "Look, this is for the local community." Secondary to that, I think there is probably, partly because I think the number five has been doing this already for a while, it's no longer been seven Wintermere Drive for a few years since it started stopping at Newton Lees, Astor. It's, there's probably something that we can ask the public transport team at Milton Keynes City Council to look at, and that's around access to those bus stops on Stoke Road and making sure that the access to them is as good as possible, and also that they are, the bus stops are upgraded to make them suitable for all weathers.
Can I come back on that?
Yeah.
So, their response was that they will speak to Milton Keynes Council to get bus shelters provided. That's what I think it said in that email, did it not, here? And also, to be fair, in that email that they responded, also, to me, it kind of said that they, that it was Milton Keynes. It kind of did say it was Milton Keynes as well, didn't it? It was a bit like.
Quite carefully worded.
Yeah, it was like, they have consulted Milton Keynes Council, basically, and it's been given the go-ahead, so.
So, Milton Keynes Council are notified, and whether, I don't know what their status was, across consulted or not, but they're, whether it's notified or consulted, I can't remember what the rules and that are, but essentially, they still notify them and say this is changing and get on with it.
There is, in your pack, there is the statement that came on strategically for transport, which I included in the pack, which says very clearly that these services are determined in.
Okay, sorry.
Counselor. Would it be possible to put a statement out clarifying who's made the decision of changing the bus route, because the residents think it's Milton Keynes' fault, Milton Keynes' council's fault, whatever. It just clarifies it a bit more, then they know who to petition to get the bus service back to normal. Well, they could petition both, but, you know, just puts more pressure maybe on a reaver. Maybe.
So, I think that's a really good, that's a really good point. So, there's three things out that we've talked about. I think in the letter to a reaver, it's also highlighting about that they need to be provided correctly on that decision, because there's misinformation coming from drivers. But that might, well, who knows the reasons for that, but be careful what I say there. So, a letter to a reaver, a letter to MKCC, the transport lead, about provision of bus stops and possibly contact in the regeneration team members because of the pathways, et cetera. And then, of course, that first statement, I think, is what I'm saying.
That statement goes a little higher.
From myself, I still don't understand the rationale, especially as you've confirmed something for me this evening, Marie, which is, one of the buses still goes around Fergie.
They both go around.
They both go around, but none of them go around Wintermere.
So, what's having actually saving? You know, so I think this has been said, that it's about saving time. I don't.
About two minutes.
But one, let me, if you allow me, I'll put my transport planning head on, which is a slightly different sector, but if they've changed the route to go all the way around Newton Lees, the bus company will be looking to make that time up somewhere else. Otherwise, they'll have to increase buses, increase, I mean, increase costs essentially. So, by taking that bit round Wintermere Drive, they're saving about two minutes, which compensates for some of the drive going around Newton Lees. So, I think the two things are in tandem, because it's all about that balance in the journey time, so they don't increase it too long, that they then can't turn around a bus at the other end and then put more buses and more drivers in as soon as possible.
Who's had a proposal?
I think we've got a proposal to.
And who's proposal was it?
Well, it's simply from the council.
Is that correct? Is it your proposal then?
I'm going to send a letter to a reaver explaining the town council's concerns, behalf of the resident, to ask the public transport team at Milton Keynes City Council to look at access and the bus stops in Fergie.
Or Stoke Road.
Stoke Road, sorry. Stoke Road, and copy in the regent team. And finally, to put the state entire website about the fact that it wasn't a reaver who made the decision.
No, it was a reaver.
I mean, well, sorry.
Can you not share that on Facebook as well?
Yeah, we need to put it on.
That would be better, wouldn't it?
Put it on the search.
Then they can.
Ooh, I don't know.
Channel this.
But these letters already, finally, except the one I sent you got tonight. If we can squeeze it in tomorrow, we will.
So, amendment, yeah. Is there any way of doing it, so we could ask that they consider taking Fergie up of number six, and putting that going around Wintermere Drive? So, at least the whole state has then a service of the estate. Literally, it'd make no difference to them.
I think so.
Because what, I'm glad some more.
I, I, I accept that.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
I don't think it was seconded, so it's a seconded for a member.
Sorry. Do we have a second to the amendment? Yes, thank you, Andre. Do you accept the amendment?
Yes.
Okay. So, it has been a while since it's gone.
Well, I don't think, I don't think the original motion was seconded.
Okay. So, do we have a second to the amended motion?
Yeah. That happens, I think, yeah.
Thank you. Always in favour. Anybody against? Any abstentions? No, that is unanimous. Thank you. Item 11, to receive an update report on the Bletchley and Selly Stratford neighbourhood plan consisting of a revised project plan and to grant emerging policies. This is page 93, 702 in your pack.
And there are members of the neighbourhood plan group here who may wish to speak to these documents, just to provide us a short update from.
Is there anybody who was attending the meeting who wants to give an update?
There's also, just on top of that, since that meeting, since the last meeting of the CEO group. Task forces, Deputy Clark and I have attended a meeting with the director of planning at Milton Keynes Council to talk about the way we're going to move forward with the neighbourhood plan in the context of the town deal and the emerging new city plan. So, it was a very constructive and helpful.
Anyone want to give us an update? It's a view of meeting.
It was a meeting, I'm pretty sure.
Anybody else attended?
That's where we all can count the wine with, but it was a while ago. I mean, I'm happy to say that.
Okay, good to hear.
At the meeting, what happened at the meeting was that the timetable that we had in the pack was looked at again, and that's also been looked at by the steering group. And everyone seems happy with that timetable. It's quite ambitious. And then, there was a general discussion with the consultant from O'Neill, Haymer Kane, and went through the notes in the document that starts on page 95, and talked through the work that had been done by the two task forces. And there was a brief discussion on the emerging policies, which start on page 99 and go through to page 102. And so, there was, the brief got into a sort of fair degree of detail about the emerging policies in the document. And there was, there was no, from my recollection of the meeting, there was no dissent to the proposed emerging policies. But obviously, what will happen next with these policies is that they need to be refined and go to community consultation. And the hope is that we might be able to do this in October, which would be, would fit before the bulk of the consultation on the Brunel Centre Development Brief, and before this consultation on the Public Well Improvement Project, which is likely to be active. But it's a question of whether we can be ready in time for October, bearing in mind that it's October next week. There's a, there's a meeting at the steering group on the, it's next Thursday, fifth of October, the meeting with the steering group to discuss this further. But I, I do feel that it's really important that we've got to the stage now where town council really needs to get behind the work that's been done by the volunteers in the task forces and the work that's been done by the steering group. Because we're getting to the really interesting part now of these emerging policies. And, you know, there needs to be active buy-in and commitment from, from the town council and the council as well.
So, councillors, I think that we probably need more support from people to be attending the neighbourhood plan. It's getting to the point where we are very, getting very close to agreeing the plan, and at some point in the near to mid-future, having a referendum. So, I think it would be great if people can sign up and attend those meetings. Could we send a separate email out about this and including the information?
Yeah.
Give some dates, and ask you to sign up. That would be great.
I would, all councillors, to read the document of these emerging proposals that we're considering consulting on. Because if a council, you know, the council is sponsoring the plan, the town council has to sponsor it. If there's not buy-in in emerging policies, it seems, it seems, you know, well, I think there needs to be buy-in from them if we're going out to consult on them. Obviously, don't pre-clude what will come from consultation. But if you already think it's a poor idea, then perhaps it's worth to consult on them, something that you think's a good idea. And, yeah, I just feel we need more commitment to the process now.
Thanks very much. So, next item on the agenda is item 12, to note the likely availability of cost of living crisis spending for Milton Keynes City Council to support reverence and to authorize the club to apply funding if and when available, and to delegate arrangements for activities to support the community to the community committee. Any questions or comments from members?
I have the heads-up from Milton Keynes Council that there should be some funding. Don't know how much it's going to be yet, but we would, we would think that last year the funding that was used for warm spaces and community activities to support people with the cost of living crisis was well-used and well-received. Try for it and have the opportunity to use it again.
So, members, do members wish us to apply for that?
Yes.
Yes.
Happy for the community committee to determine.
Want to get in the chat?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. So, I will pose that as a second up.
Yeah.
Okay, so, thanks very much. Always in favour. Anybody against? No, that's unanimous. Okay, next item on the agenda, item 13, to note previous council decisions and confirm arrangements for resident consultation in anticipation of the budget preparation. I think this is a paper that you have tabled. And this is a resident survey that is going to be included in the next version of the neighbourhood. Is there anything we obviously would like to say about this?
Yes, I would like to say that we had hoped to sort of discuss this in a more detailed community committee meeting. But unfortunately, that meeting didn't go ahead. So, we drafted, it's difficult to draft a survey by committee in any event. We drafted a, we drafted a survey. We have, now that we've put it all on paper and reviewed it, we, we think that one thing that we need to do is perhaps make it more explicit in the survey that the council will not be bound by the feedback in the survey, in the sense that it will take it into consideration, but it won't automatically do what residents have asked for, because some of the things that residents ask for may be completely not feasible for whatever reason. So, perhaps need to strengthen the wording to sort of make that clear. But if you recall, council decided that they specifically wanted to ask residents about their views, so as to inform the budgeting process this year. So, that's what we've tried to do in the survey, but I'm very loathe to put it in the newsletter without having gone in from the council.
Okay, any comments?
Yeah, this is, this is a good idea. But the only thing is, I'll be concerned if it says there, we might look for you soon, but we're not going to do what you want. It's got to be worded in a way that we do our best.
Yeah, that's, that's, I think, when we showed it to people round and round about today, the feedback we've had is that it implies that we. and the feedback we've had is that it implies that we're going to do everything that we're asked of you to suggest. And obviously, that, you know, that, that's not necessarily that at the end of the day, the decision-makers are the town councillors. But you will want to be informed by the views of residents. And I mean, one of the things that we've noticed in previous town council surveys is that we don't necessarily reach all the parts of the community. In fact, the last survey was, was very heavily skewed towards a certain age group, which was, it's very typical of what happens with surveys, but it was older people who were completing the survey. So you wouldn't want to not consider the potential views of younger people when making decisions. So, yes, it is a tricky message to convey, council, I agree with you.
And also, if, if the, the way to do it, to reach everybody is obviously in the newsletter and on social media, the young ones are the, the ones actually.
It will be digital, it will be digital.
Just a question about the wording, question five. Does that precept? I just find the question, if it leads us to.
Don't have to, I think it was to try and convey to people that we recognise that times are hard. But we can take that.
Because in my opinion, it comes across the like, persons recently, I'm not saying that it comes across as like, they don't want the precept.
Oh, we don't want that, no, we want it to be.
So I'm not really keen on that, because it's like, that person, if you're not rest.
I think I agree with, with question five. That's, that's really the only personal thing that I, because I, I think, yes, we would all love to pay less tax, but actually we have to pay tax to pay for rights or services. And I think that the council has a really robust, you know, midterm financial plan that is set together. And the, the precept increases have been guided by that. So for me, and I know that we've previously as council debated whether we want to cut services or increase the precept, and the councillors were not very keen to do so. And so I, I think that, I, I've also, when I've been out on the streets talking to residents, I saw somebody at the big street eat who actually said, the best council service that we have invested in is the counselling service because I've been waiting a number of years to get counselling on the NHS. And I got this through the council. So I just find that so surprising that, and we've just got to be very careful about, I think, the services that we, some of the services that we provide are very much needed. Ed, I think you had your hands up.
Yeah, okay, I think the service of course, I think will give us a glimpse in terms of legitimacy. And with all surveys, it gives, it gives an insight into whose, what people's thoughts are who respond. And that's always the important thing. I think the thing about tax rises, council taxes, it's a, there are some taxes which rise as the economy grows, as wages grow, like income taxes, the money stays the same expenses. As people's wages grow or other streams, the tax fall increases. With council tax, it doesn't work like that. So you have to always put an increase to just keep above, just keep yourself where you are. And that's, that's always a challenge and challenge of doing that type.
And previously, this council has, has had years where we have not had any. But actually, what's happened? We've had to put an increase in, in, in the end, perhaps a bigger increase than we had. If we, we had to, if we kept up with inflation, we might not have had such big increases to, to stay stable. Any other councillors want to add to the debate? Taryn?
Is there the latest copy of the delivery plan and where we are with that?
Yes, it was reported, actually, we called councillor, it was agreed that we'd report the delivery plan to finance and governance. And it was reported on last occasion, it's on the website, I think. But I certainly can make sure, I can double check tomorrow to make sure it's on.
Okay, just one more problem even. When you say, you know, increases and cutting services, I don't think we should frighten people in the world. If we don't do this, we have to cut services. Because I think with the way we work, we work very well with all the services we got. And we get a good feedback on everything we do. Even with the grass cutting, four weeks, and I heard people saying to me, Milton Keynes Council have got new grasscutters. I said, no, we've got new grasscutters. They said they're doing a fantastic job, you know. So what we're providing, people are liking, you know. So what, what we should be looking at is we've got buildings we can make money on. And we've got to see how much we can make in-house as well as putting it on top of the precept.
I think, Ron, some of the things you've mentioned there is actually my point is, I think if, and my concern is that face value, we say, do you want to pay less tax? Somebody says yes. But actually, what, what they don't understand is the way that council tax works and the fact that everything that we buy or procure will have inflation included. And actually, if we don't include inflation in our council tax, then actually it, it means that we cannot provide the services to the same degree as what we do. So, so for me, it's, I just want councillors to be aware that, certainly where I, I am, I don't think that I can honestly say that I will bind myself to what, what residents say there. I think I will, I will take account of it. But I think we, as we have a duty to make the right decision for the community with everything on balance, not just the, the community wants the, the tax cut. And can I ask that?
So could I just ask then, I suppose, whatever, for number, question five, can we just amend it to get rid of the cost of living? I don't want the question to be too wordy, but have something along the lines of saying, you know, the precept pays for the number of services, all the services that accounts are run. Then you can just do eating, free swimming, for residents, house and these things.
That is mentioned.
Maybe, maybe just, I don't know, just somewhere in the question, I don't want to make it too wordy.
I, I do.
Yeah, that's my unique question.
Yeah, so, so how should we, should we take out also? Because I've also recognised in that, that we had two big increases, once January and all that. Should we take that out as well? But also, you know, that's why, that's exactly why I wanted this to come to council tonight. But it's also, should that go out? Should we just say, take out that first sentence and say something along the lines of what Ethan said?
Yeah.
But we've got to think that carefully about how we do this. Because, because I'm not quite sure what words we'd finish. And then the question, this year, what do you want the town council to do?
I think I would also say, what would be your preference? Not, not what do you want the councils to do? Because I think we can be mindful of people's preferences, and I think that we can make our own decision. And I, I don't think we should passing the decision onto the public.
Yeah. Just say something as well, because we've had two big increases the last two years. And look, this year was quite a big increase. We've just got to be careful, we're not only any people who can't afford to pay their council tax at a time where people are struggling to put food on the table and to put electricity or gas into their house. Because they won't be happy if they're not getting the services what they're paying for. And I, I just think we need to bear that in mind.
I hope, I hope councillor, that you feel that people are getting the services that they're paying.
Yeah, but I'm feeling that they're going to get angry if they don't.
That, that is your job to make sure that they do.
But if it keeps going up and going up, they're not going to be impressed. We need to come to the point where we stop increasing.
So, so I think, just to come back on to that councillor, we do have a, a, a financial plan that we've put together and we can predict what they are. Actually, I just need to correct you. Last year, the figure came down significantly from the year before. Yes, it was, it was, it's, it's still high, but it, it was needed. And also, we have a, we've put that financial plan together because there is a complete mismatch of services that we are offering, particularly around community buildings. Depending, you know, you have a better building in Newton Lees, you have a really good building in.
Yeah, but you haven't got to justify that to me, you need to justify that to the public.
And I completely, I completely agree with that, but I just wanted to correct what you said.
Yeah.
Thanks, Ed.
I think it's also important to note that there is also support available to residents who, who are struggling to pay their council tax. There's a council tax reduction scheme, which the, the collector of council tax runs. And so in this case, it's Milton Keynes Council who collects our, our precept on our behalf. And the council tax, and that's based, that's based on some of our, our numbers when we come to the final, when we come to budgeting. And with some very clever estimations. But that scheme is available and that gives a seventy percent reduction in, in council tax for those who meet my area. So I think it's also important that we, I don't know, there is that support available. And I don't, I don't necessarily want to put on this here, but it is worth, worth making sure that we share that information with our residents who we know are struggling.
So this later on in the sphere, your instruction. We must put somewhere in the blurb something saying that the councillors won't be bound by the outcome of the survey, that they'll be informed.
Your, 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 your preference for this survey will be noted by council.
And then this question five will be, will take these, the intercepts out when we say this year. What, what would your preference be?
Thanks for that, I know it's a really difficult subject, but thank you for your comments. Next item on the agenda is item fourteen. To note achievement of the, of the local council scheme at quality level to Bletchley and Bletchley Stratford Town Council effective from July twenty twenty-three, pages one hundred and three to one hundred and six in your pack. Do you know, does anyone want to say about this?
No, no, just to say it's good that we, we've got that.
We, I think, explained what it is.
So, so our council has met the standard for the local council award scheme. And, and effectively, it's a level of quality that we have, have met the standard for. And we are being given this to get through.
I think this is actually quite an important achievement in terms of, whilst it's not necessarily about our services all, all the time, in terms of what we do for the services, actually, this is really important in terms of how we do it. And if I remember, when I joined the town council, I don't think I would have ever expected us to be there. And the fact that we are now in a place where we are getting these quality awards, I think, and just shows how much this town council's come on over the last six, nine, five years. And, and thanks to all the councillors, but also all the officers as well for.
So congratulations to the team. I think it's a fantastic achievement and it's something that we should be really proud of. Thank you very much.
And also the council, because it is demonstrating good practice in governance and, and council improvement, as it says on the. So you can't get it without, that the council has also played that part. It's, it's both, it's a sound.
Wonderful. Okay, next item is item fifteen, financial matters, fifteen point one. To note the conclusion of the limited insurance audit for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three and publication of the notice of conclusion of the audit. From memory, consistent with finance and governance, we have passed the, the recent audit with no comments.
No, no issues.
No issues, no objections. And, and do, do we need, oh, sorry, I'm sure it needs.
Yes, no, it just, it just has to be formally noted by the full council. So that, that's, that's what we're doing with formally noting it.
So really happy to note that audit and our recent performance again. Congratulations to the Finance and Governance Committee and also to all of the officers that have been involved in, in this. And for the very good controls that we have in place with the last finances as well. And next item on the agenda is fifteen point two. To note summary financial reports showing income and expenditure. This is pages one one five to one one six. This has been reviewed by the Finance and Governance Committee. Are there any comments with regards to the budget summary? Okay, I will take it that we, everybody's happy to note that report. Next item on the agenda is fifteen point three. To gratify a list of payments made or duly made by the council before the next meeting of the Finance and Governance Committee. Does any, anybody have any comments with regards to any of the payments which are on pages one hundred and seventeen to page one hundred and twenty-two of your pack? No, I will note that, so that's noted and everybody's happy with that, moving on. Next item on the agenda is fifteen point four. To note confirmation of the planned increase in allotment rent, rents, lot of rents, something to take effect in October twenty twenty-four. And from memory, we have previously said that we would increase by CPI plus one percent.
That's right, and that's what was put to the environment and, and planning committee. And that's what they recommend is adopted by the council.
Thank you, Ed.
Not necessarily on this point, but I think you missed out fifteen point two. Which is to note the, the financial report, because I have some questions on that.
No, I definitely did say something, but we can go back to it. I definitely did call down. And, okay, so also your question, so can we just finish off this item first? Any, any comments on, on fifteen point four of your options? Note, we're noted, everybody's happy, thank you. We should go back to fifteen point two, the income and expenditure reports.
Yeah, just, just really two questions. So my next to the allotment income, is, is that, does that all come in one go?
Yeah, it's at the moment, so these, these figures are only up to the end of August. Because that number one has finished yet. So, so we're busy collecting allotment renewals at the moment, so they're, they're coming in quick and fast every day.
So my question is just around the income on Newton Lees Pavilion, that just seems to be a bit below where it potentially should be if you, if you worked out per month. It's probably, it's probably not as far as I thought it was, as you just said, it's up to the end of August. Are we looking to see how we can address that or are we looking for any savings in the cost of running it to try and balance that off?
We're certainly looking for savings in the cost of running Newton Lees, but we're also, I think the reason for that is because we have made some changes to the numbers that people are allowing to attend events. Because of the impact that these very large events are having on most of the Newton Lees. The, the noise and the traffic. That's that large booking that sometimes overstay because the bookers underestimate the time it will take them to clear up. And we've still got a piece of work going on at the moment. And the Newton Lees bookings task force is due to meet to consider further whether we need to make more changes to the sort of events that we commit to doing. I think that's why.
Any other comments? No? Okay, thank you very much, that is noted. And the last item on the agenda, fifteen point five. We note a, a timetable for preparation of draft budget for financial year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. And to draw councillors' attention to the need to base any proposals.
Yes, so this has already been appearing on committee agendas for individual committees to put forward any proposals for new or different activities. And the next round of committee meetings will be looking at their budget proposals. And the first draft of the budget will be reviewed at full council in November. And then just a reminder that the precept meeting and the final setting of the budget will be on the thirtieth of January. And you will be in a position to take account of the feedback on the question survey. And you will be in a position to take account of the feedback from the rest of the survey.
Okay, anyone got any comments on them? Hello, so it's twenty forty and that will ring our council meeting to close this evening. And for people watching in via our state of meeting channel tonight, the next council meeting will be at seven thirty on the tenth of October. And that will be for our committee. Thank you very much.